Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Greg Giltner is the chaplain at the Oklahoma City Police Department. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman David Greenwell if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Would you present me, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this day that you have blessed us with. And Father, we're so very thankful that we can be here in this meeting today. And we're most thankful for these men and women that represent the city council and their leadership and their guidance. God, we just ask you continue to be with them and watch over them. Thank you for the citizens of this great city and the progress that we see and the wonderful things that we have to enjoy. God, we thank you for the dedicated men and women that work for the city, especially the police department. Thank you so much for the service that we see with them. Just pray for a measure of protection upon them and their families. We ask all this through Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for February is Allied Arts Month in the city of Oklahoma City. And we're going to have a special presentation this morning. I'll say Deborah McCullough Center is here with Mike Turpin on towels. Will all three of you come up? We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled up here.
Whereas the month of February has been recognized as Allied Arts Month by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City and hundreds of nonprofit organizations, local businesses, and community at large for four decades. Whereas the arts enhance and enrich the lives of all Oklahoma City residents from all walks of life and backgrounds. Whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. Whereas the nonprofit arts industry has a nearly $315 million impact on our state's economy, supports the full-time equivalent of more than 10,000 jobs, and generates over $29 million in state and local government revenues. Whereas Allied Arts has served as a champion of Central Oklahoma's art community and has allocated more than $43 million since 1973. Now therefore, Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2014 as Allied Arts Month in Oklahoma City, and he urges citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our community and to especially encourage greater participation in the arts by all citizens.
Let's show our appreciation for those that are working hard to make sure the arts are supported in Oklahoma City. Deborah?
Yes, we just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for being so supportive of the arts. We feel certain that we're going to reach our $3.2 million goal this year under the leadership of the amazing, the wonderful Mike Turpin and Judy Love. And as we go across the country, there are 60 organizations that do what Allied Arts does for the city here. And they're all asking us, how do you continue to grow the campaign? And how do you continue to be the fastest-growing United Arts Fund in the U.S., right here in Oklahoma City? And we say, because we're a city that's working together, we're a city that's on the move, so we give much of our success to you. Your success is our success. So we thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. We're proud to have a city that is very supportive of their arts community.
And you all are helping the arts organizations, also a lot of children's organizations.
Yes. Arts education is one of our greatest focus points. And so we go all over the state delivering our arts programs. We have 26 member organizations. Some are here today represented. And then we also give grants to any arts and cultural 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
Thank you very much. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you. Thank you.
We have to bring treats every time we come, so. It'll be at 8:00 in the morning. I'll be first, right?
Well, as we call the meeting to order and we move on to item four, it's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 21st. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 14th.
Move the item second.
All right. Comments or questions on the Journal? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I'd like to request a continuance for the, under the item from council on the resolution. I've talked to all the sponsors except Councilman Shadid and Councilman Pettis. I would have got to you guys, but my, my, is that better? I would have got to both you guys, except my computer crashed on me last night. But I'm going to ask that we continue it until after the city of Tulsa has an opportunity to weigh in on it. And also, a couple of us have meetings scheduled with representatives of the different entities that are involved in it. And I think it might be well to go ahead and have more information before we move forward. So I'm going to just ask it be stricken from the agenda today. And when we, after we get another week or so down the line, we'll probably put it back on. In some form, it'll be back on, sure. But I just want to do it. So if anybody's here waiting to talk about that, they can, they don't have to.
Appreciate that. Anything else, Jim?
I have one other item on page 15. On page 15, under item 8G1, item B 3212, Northeast 12th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Unless for a session council meeting, continue as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Six items.
Move the item seven to the visitor's area.
All right. Is there any comments or questions here on the MFA?
Mayor, I just had one quick question. On the MFA, A is the replacement of some elevators at 100 North Walker. And it looks like we sure missed the bid, but I think I understand that maybe we're upgrade, we're not just replacing, but we're going to upgrade the elevator.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
One elevator's up over there. It was down for a while yesterday, but I think it's back up. And so we have one elevator working in the facility at this point.
And we have received substantial insurance proceeds to cover most of the work over there.
We anticipate that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Ready to vote the MFA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Four items. All right. Comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today.
Move the item second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket.
Move the item second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations today?
Your Honor, I have minor questions on 6A, Alpha, 6T, Tango, and 6 Alpha, Alpha.
Okay. I have a question on Y.
All right. Pat, you want to get us started?
Thank you, Your Honor. On 6A, it's a request for proposals to do some work on our police helicopters. We have a rough idea what the cost is going to be.
Amy Simpson probably does. Amy, the cost of modifications to the two police helicopters?
The police chief may have a better idea, but it's my understanding it's going to be at least a million dollars.
For the two of them?
For both.
For both. Million dollars covers two helicopters? Yes.
I believe so.
Thank you. I was curious about the rough cost. I know we won't know for sure until we get the request for proposals back. And item T, 6T, just to add a comment. We have down at the last paragraph on the first page, I guess the only page, about the estimated cost. We've got the figure down to two decimal points. Things like that's not an estimate, that's some kind of a calculation. Give us, down to 49 cents. If it's an estimate, it ought to be rounded off somewhere along the line. I don't disagree with that, Mr. Ryan. And on 6 AAA, it's a double A, rather, it does some work about, you know, Pershing Boulevard. And are we going to put a traffic light at Villa, part of this project?
Not within this project, Councilman. This is the maps project that we're doing with the parking lot inside of the fairgrounds itself.
Okay, but will increase traffic, I'm assuming, on Pershing, General Pershing Drive? And as a result of that, do we need to put a traffic light at Villa? We've got a stop sign there now. And it's traffic moving fairly fast on Villa and fairly fast on General Pershing.
We can get with.
As part of the May Avenue work, there is a traffic light that'll be installed there at General Pershing in May. That's where primary access is being coordinated with fairgrounds for that new parking lot. It actually includes new turn lanes. It actually removes the stop signs and things that are already there. So it's going to be greatly improved.
Okay. How about the intersection at Villa, General Pershing Drive?
There is not currently a part of that project. I mean, that's a new intersection that's come onto our list. And so again, as funding is available, I think that's one that you and I have discussed, but I've got that on a list for future improvements. And if we do see increases in traffic there, we would do so.
Probably not in my lifetime, but it's an uncertainty factor. Thank you very much.
Our backlog of traffic signals is not that significant. I don't know what it is at this point in time, but it's a handful. It's not a great deal.
James?
The item Y is a energy efficiency thing that we're, for a conservation block grant. That's $40,000. And then we're going to use about $1,000 of our capital improvement fund. So my question really is about how long will it take to make that, make that up in energy savings?
T.O. Bowman with the Sustainability Office. We have calculations, but it's based on estimates of what's installed currently. We don't have exact wattages of what's there during the installation process. We'll collect that data and be able to have an accurate payback that we can get you. We estimate about eight to 10, eight to nine years.
Eight to nine.
Yes. But we expect the fixtures that we're installing to be maintenance-free for about that time.
Okay. And do you think that eight to nine years will pay back the, our $10,000 or the whole?
The $10,000 will be made up, well, much sooner than that.
Much sooner. Okay, so you're.
Our investment will be made up very quickly.
Very quickly. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Ready to vote the consent docket? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And we're on to the concurrents docket. All right. Any comments or questions on the concurrence? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8 begins a series of items that require separate votes, and we begin with a series of zoning cases. First is an ABC issue in Ward 6 at 312 and 320 Northwest 23rd Street. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. This is obviously a very active corridor. And when this was brought before the planning commission, there were no protests, and it was recommended for approval. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Anyone here hoping to speak on item 8A1 today? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 1544 Southwest 119th Street. It's currently R1 single-family, will become a C3 commercial district. David?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. Is the developer here this morning? Bob, could you maybe provide some information on this development?
This piece here is a part of a drainage area, and they want to rezone it because it changes their setbacks for the mini storage facility that's to the west. So the drainage area runs along behind those houses so that this won't bring the commercial development any closer. It just allows some alterations with the setbacks.
Okay. Thank you. Francis, is there anyone here signed up? Okay. I move for approval.
Okay. We're voting on item 8A2, and we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 1321 Southeast 66th Street. It's currently a planned unit development, and they're going to switch it to I2 moderate industrial. Pete?
Is the applicant here? Are there any protesters here?
No one has signed up.
I move.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 7825 Winnie Street. It's R4 general residential, and it would become an I1 light industrial district.
Is the applicant present? Bob, we were looking for an easement. Did we get it?
No, we haven't. We've been trying to contact the applicant, and he hasn't responded. So we should probably defer this a couple of weeks.
Two weeks?
I think.
Move to defer two weeks.
Second.
Motion is to defer for two weeks. Cast your votes. Item 8A5 is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 8731 South McKinley Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family, will become a new simplified planned unit development. David?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Johnson, would you like to make the presentation?
Good morning. Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. As you know, this item's been deferred several times in an effort to coordinate with the neighbors adjacent to this property to the north. And what we have resolved at this point is to change, and we submitted this to the staff last week, is to change the front 120 feet adjacent to McKinley back to R1, straight R1 zoning, so that a house could be built there. The remainder of the property to the west would fall under the specific zoning use that is in the SPUD, which is limited outdoor storage with height restrictions and screening and a high fence around it to work adjacently with the personal storage units to the west. I attempted to contact the single person that we've been talking to, Ms. Eldra Lyons. Yesterday, I did speak with her husband, let her know this was coming, and that was what we agreed to. And he didn't sound objective, but I don't know if they're here.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Can you just explain a little bit about the fact that there will not be concrete added to this area? It'll be gravel, I believe, which.
The, well, the area of this, this track two that we added to the SPUD would be the R1 tract.
Right.
So it would remain grass until somebody builds a house, and it'll be developed as a single family. This area here will be paved, and it will require detention for the city ordinance. And the good news with this track is there is fall out to McKinley. So because there are concerns of the property owners on either side about the drainage, this is a very flat area. When they built this site historically, they had to raise it up, and it drains in three directions. And detention was provided. It was built according to city standards. We will most likely put a small concrete flume to take the drainage out to McKinley is where that lot currently drains to now. And, but we'll provide detention inside this site. So it should not have any adverse impact on any of the properties abutting this, this specific tract.
Okay. And the use of the area, the commercial area, not the residential portion, but the commercial, that'll be for outside storage?
That's correct.
Yes. So no new buildings will be placed on the property?
That's correct.
Okay. And there is going to be site proof fencing as well as shrubs and trees surrounding that?
That's correct. There's a site proof screening required on the abutting. Obviously, this would be the backyard of a residential tract here where the dark shade is. That is the height restriction, can't have anything stored there higher than 12 feet.
Okay. Thank you. Well, based upon the significant modifications to this, and I do believe that the individuals who were protesting have kind of, you know, again, they would prefer to keep this just an empty lot like everybody else would. But given this being probably as least intrusive as possible, I would recommend that we approve this.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A5. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8A6 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 18200 North May. It's currently a planned unit development, and it would become a simplified planned unit development. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant here? The applicant nor his representative apparently ain't there. Do we have anybody signed up to talk about it? This went through the planning commission unanimously approved, were no protesters at the planning commission. It is a general confirmation with what's, with the residential area out there, and this is going to be a duplex residential area. And there seems to be a growing demand in Oklahoma City for smaller housing. This will answer that. So I move approval.
All right. Comments or questions on item 8A6? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Your Honor, can we get the emergency on this one, please?
Sure. Make that motion.
I move emergency on A6.
Okay. Cast your votes, and the emergency passes 9-0.
Thank you.
We're on to item 8A7. It's a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1215 Northeast 34th Street. It's currently R4 general residential, and it would become a new simplified planning and development.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the applicant present? We actually, staff and I reached out several times to the applicant. We were made aware of some ongoing issues. This charter school is being sponsored by Oklahoma City Public School District. And on yesterday, the interim superintendent, Dave Lopez, called me and said that they have recommended to the board to end their contract with this particular charter school. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a deferral until the school district makes their decision in reference to this charter school.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second.
So we're deferring indefinitely? Or to?
I'm sorry, to defer for four weeks.
Four weeks.
All right. So this is headed for a four-week deferral. Is there anyone here hopes to speak on this item? All right. Cast your votes. That item is deferred for four weeks. Item 8A8 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 301 Northwest 104th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential and I1 light industrial district, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any protesters? Is the applicant present? I move for approval.
Thank you.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8A8. It passed unanimously. Item 8A9 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 3901 South Walker. It's currently R1 single-family, would become a new simplified planned unit development. Okay. We have a motion and a second on item 8A9. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Mayor, can I make a little bit of a comment on this? This is kind of a new concept that we're writing in Oklahoma City Public School of Energy into with regard to providing wellness facilities on high school campuses. This is a temporary modular building that is located on the south side of the Capitol Hill, excuse me, on the Capitol Hill High School campus. And it is designed to, at some point in time, probably co-terminus with, with, if the Capitol Hill site is the location for the new senior health and wellness center, it will be moved to another high school campus to provide wellness activities on another high school somewhere in the Oklahoma City system. I think there are three other high schools that have requested something like this. It is not just for the students, but it's for the students and the families, the extended families of the kids that attend school there. It's really kind of a new concept, and this is really the first one. And it's kind of an exciting opportunity to do something right in an area where we have some serious health and wellness concerns as we do around some of the other high schools in the city. So I went ahead and moved approval without saying that. But it's, it is going to be something to kind of keep our eyes on as a way to do something about the kind of avalanche of poor wellness numbers that we hear around the country and around the city. So hopefully, this will be a good start to, to slow that down.
Yeah. Thanks, Pete, for those comments. Item 8B is a zoning case in Ward 5, and this is a special permit to erect a junior high school and a field house. And this is being made by the Moore School District. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's good to see a lot of activity out here in Ward 5. One of the issues that a very fast-growing school district has is the need to continue to construct new schools. Is anyone here to speak on this, Francis?
No one's signed up.
Okay. Well, it's, it's proposal to build a new junior high and a field house. And Bob, has there been any concerns or complaints?
At the planning commission meeting, there was some discussion about traffic.
Yes.
And it's my understanding they'll, they'll put a turn lane here in front of the school, but the rest of Pennsylvania will not have that.
Okay.
But there were a couple of people that mentioned traffic concerns.
Right. Okay.
But it's really designed to get most of the buses off of the street.
Good. Okay. Well, thank you. And we, each year, I meet with the school district at the start of the year to just see what their plans are. And this is one of three new schools that will be built in addition to the two that are being rebuilt due to the tornado that hit last May. So I would move for approval, and we also need an emergency on this one as well.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions here on item 8B? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And you want to make a motion on the emergency?
Yes, sir. I move for approval on the emergency clause.
Cast your vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
I would add, Bob, if there's a way that we could help ensure that they're adding some walkability components to this school, you know, we've, we've built a lot of schools in this community that we didn't connect with the neighborhoods nearby. And at middle school is, you know, is kind of a good age when kids are old enough to walk, but perhaps not old enough to drive, that we at least take those things into consideration with sidewalks and things like that. Can you help us follow that and make sure that they have some ideas and keeping that in mind?
Yeah. We've talked to them a couple of different times, and I'm, I'm almost positive there is a sidewalk along Penn, but I'll have to look to see if there was anything connecting to that neighborhood since it was a pre-existing neighborhood.
Right. Okay. Thanks. We're on to item 8C. This is an ordinance that's been to the council before. This has to do with the details involving the rental of wet stalls at Lake Stanley Draper. It's a, for final hearing today. Is anyone here to show up to speak on item 8C? All right. How about a motion, then? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8D is just being introduced today, but it has some new codes. And Bob Teener's here to tell us about the changes that the council can consider to our existing codes.
Just have a brief presentation. This is the IBC 2009 code. This is our commercial building code. The state requires that cities adopt an official code. Adoption of this code will keep us in compliance with that requirement. There's really, there's a lot of minor changes, but there's really only two significant changes to this code from the past codes. The first talks about a, it changes the occupancy load from currently a 300 occupant to 100 occupant before sprinklers are required. And this is for nightclubs, restaurants, those types of assembly uses. And that change was done already in the 2006 code. And so most people that submit new applications are already designing to that, to that standard. So we feel like that won't be a, really a problem for them. The other one is, deals with residential-style office buildings. You see them all over town, really. They have the high pitch roof. And what a lot of them have done in the past, they try to use, create a second story in there with an office. there with an office. And the current code requires a second access point to that. And so we've had trouble with, we've had to require an exterior exits. They've had to go to the Board of Appeals. This new code eliminates that second exit, and it'd be an advantage for the developers. And this slide, back in July 2013, the mayor's task force looked into the impacts of the severe storms, and one of their recommendations was to get feedback from staff about the possibility of putting safe rooms in schools. And so staff referred this to the Building Code Commission to let them consider it as part of this amendment that's coming up. And basically listed there, there was a lot of discussion about the cost for adding safe rooms to schools. They talked about what standard should apply. You know, should you apply it to all schools, public and private? Should it include daycares? They had two different meetings. There was multiple discussions. Really, I think the bottom line, it came down to the authority to require it. There was a lot of discussion about that, and they really felt that it should be the school board that makes that, places that requirement on the school when they're being constructed as opposed to the commission. And their recommendation on this reflects that. They agree that safe rooms should be required. They just didn't feel like it was really their place to, they weren't, they shouldn't be setting policy. They should, and so that was their recommendation. Basically, now, this ordinance has an amended resolution as a part of it, that if the council decides to require safe rooms, then it can be adopted that way.
What we were talking about is for new construction.
That's correct.
For a school that is built inside the city limits of Oklahoma City regardless of the district.
That's correct.
And so are you suggesting that we may not have the authority to require that? Is there an issue with state law or?
No, it was the commission that felt they didn't have the authority to, they weren't really, they didn't set policy. They review the codes and they weren't comfortable making the recommendation, but they were advised at the meetings that they had that council had that authority, and that may be what happened.
This will be an amendment we can consider.
That's correct.
Okay. Pete, do you have any comments on that? You served with this on that.
We spent some time, and it was actually a very, a very positive result. The group that met really represented a pretty wide range of interests with regard to school safety and safe rooms. We had people from the weather folks and construction people, all kinds of people there from the State Board of Education. And I think our conclusion was that the economic impact of retrofitting every school with a safe room was beyond the scope of, we just, there was no financial way to do that. The cost of that was going to be so, so much that we couldn't see doing that. But we did, I believe unanimously, believe that new construction ought to have a safe room feature in it, because there's such a difference between the cost of new construction and retrofitting, so.
And our experience has been that the new constructions are including safe rooms. Our maps for kids' schools did, although that was with the state involvement. But we have no reason to believe that the districts don't plan to do this anyway. We just felt like in a matter that would provide some sort of certainty. I just don't feel comfortable going forward without requiring something. Now, when you get into, you know, the daycare centers and all of those things, you know, that's, you know, it's an issue that can become as large as you'd like it to be. So what is, when you say educational group E, what is that?
These are, these are facilities that are, have six students or more. So a daycare could fall into this classification depending on how they design their building and what criteria they propose. But this is really not, wouldn't include daycare centers because they're not an educational facility.
But it's all, but would all, only require them in new construction?
This is, oh, that's correct. Only for new construction.
Okay. Your Honor?
Yes.
Excuse me. Can we get into a little bit more of the detail as to what exactly is the definition of a safe room? I mean, would it require to be underground? Or could you construct a part of the school in a manner that would be more storm resistant?
The 2009 code has really three options. They have an option to build as a, to meet FEMA requirements. There's an ICC 500 requirement, and then there's a provision that you have to have a similar to those, you could design to a similar standard. So it's really up to the school. They can, they can do underground, they can do, harden the structure to meet those codes. Some examples would be, they would do it in the gymnasium, they might do it in the kindergarten rooms where there's restrooms there already, or maybe the locker rooms. So there are multiple options, but it really, what we learned in the, in the discussion with the Building Code Commission, going underground is really, increases the cost quite a bit more than hardening the structure in place.
Mr. Green, well, I've been to several of the suburban school districts that have some hardened areas. And Deer Creek, for example, has a middle school that has a wrestling room that's hardened. Basically, you need to have a restroom, you need to have no windows, you need to have hardened walls, and that's generally a cinder block wall that's got rebar in it filled with concrete is basically, and then the roof has to be tied down. And the other important thing is that there's got to be a baffle or a break for the doors so that a piece, a projectile, whether it's a piece of timber or a telephone pole or something, can't come down the corridor and pierce a door. There's got to be a jog in it to make sure that there's not a direct path for that. So those are the major things. Cafeterias are awful, easy, not easy, but are, I think are more of the less expensive ways to do it where you can take a cafeteria, and that's been done in some elementary schools. Gymnasiums have been done.
Yes, I would agree with your point. Then for us to have some type of requirement for a safe room with new construction, especially since we have some flexibility as to what would qualify for the definition of a safe room. Now, Pat?
No, just a quick question. Bob, is there any discussion about requiring safe rooms in new residential construction?
Not with that code commissioned because they really deal with commercial. But I have had some discussions with Laura Johnson about it. We've met with the Residential Code Commission, and we talked, had some discussions about residential sprinklers. And so we intend to take that back because we know you've asked about it, take it back to that commission at a later date and talk to them about it.
Councilman, what's happening in far southwest Oklahoma City in the areas where they've had several tornadoes, the developers, the builders themselves are taking that on, and you find in many of the homes that are being constructed, if not a requirement by the developer of a particular neighborhood.
I think it would be helpful maybe if we had a citywide code then that had minimum specifications in it, sure that what was being offered to the public was indeed a safe room, not just, you know, closet kind of thing.
In other words, if it's being marketed as such, it should have some sort of standard set up.
It should meet somebody's regulations for a requirement for a safe room in a residential construction.
Would this, this requirement have, would it apply to, say, if a school wants to build a whole new wing of classrooms? Would, would that be included? Would they have to build a safe room in a case like that, or a new gym, or a new auditorium, whatever?
We would really, as staff, would have to look at the extent of the addition, but unless it's a significant addition, then it's probably not, it wouldn't, wouldn't be required.
So it'd be on a case-by-case basis?
Right.
All right.
Yeah, Bob, what would be the implication as far as this safe room and this educational group E involved with a church that wanted to build an education building?
David Adcock can probably answer that. David Adcock, Development Center Manager. As far as church buildings, they're under, they're under a different use group, so they would not be included on that. It would have to be like private school that a church would be building, and that could be considered, yes. But Sunday school rooms and things like that are a different use than educational.
What about, some churches are offering charter schools or private schools? If a church did that, then they would come, come under?
Yes, it definitely could at that time. It would, it'd be reviewed in the plan review process to whether it would be required or not.
All right, the item just being introduced today will be setting a public hearing for February 11th in these chambers during the meeting, and then it is currently scheduled for final adoption on February 18th. Bob, were you finished with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So any other comments or questions for Bob before we move it forward? All right. Do we have a motion on item 8D? Okay. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8E has to do with some new international standards for our fire code, and Chief Kelly Sawyers is here.
Good morning, Council. The International Fire Code 2009 is a sister code to the building code that was just introduced. It is a state minimum as the building code, and the resolution for amendments to the code will bring about the local changes that we want to enact, and it also is married to the building code, so there'll be no, no conflicts, if you will. Some of the significant changes in the International Fire Code, primarily of interest to the council at this time, is the operational permit that will be required for wrecking yards, and this has been an issue in the past. The fire code is always required to permit. However, we've gone in and enhanced the requirements for that operation, including some very specific items, and I think you probably have those in front of you, but briefly, it would require removal of fuel tanks and airbags and mercury switches and those kind of things that could cause explosion during the crushing process. It even limits time of operation and immediately reporting any issues to the fire department. So the permit would be required, there's a permit fee involved. We would have to identify all of those locations and issue those permits. Another significant change in this package is to the general schedule of fees. The permits obviously require fees, and those have been addressed to coincide with fees we charge for other permits. And the addition is a $250 flat rate fee for rapid plan review or inspection, which has become a request of industry in our new construction inspections. And the rest of it is very simple, just minor changes that would mirror what we've had in the past and to match the building code.
Okay. We do have some people that have signed up to speak on this issue. Any questions for Kelly before we hear from people? All right, Kelly, we'll perhaps call you back up. Let's hear from Reverend Jesse Jackson.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
Council. My name is Reverend Jesse Jackson, Jr. I'm the pastor of the East 6th Street Christian Church located at 1139 Northeast 6th Street here in Oklahoma City. I'm here to speak today to this particular item specifically to number three on there. I have a friend, a good friend of mine, is fond of saying that people can argue against what you say, but they cannot argue against the evidence. For years, our neighborhood has been plagued by multiple loud property-damaging booms, all times of day and night. In addition to noise pollution and disturbance of our peace, cracked windows, shifting foundations and door frames are adding up. So it is both an environmental and an economic impact on our citizens, religious, educational, and business institutions in our part of the city. We believe that this nuisance is being caused by facilities just south of our neighborhood, specifically from gas tanks exploding when cars are crushed. And so the booms are just the first level and most noticeable negative impact on our neighborhood. I'm also concerned about the environmental impact on air quality and potentially harmful effects on our groundwater as well by chemicals released in the air and spilled on the ground. So I've come here today to humbly ask the council to amend Article 2, Section 20, Chapter 60 of Oklahoma City Municipal Code 2010.
All right. Reverend Jackson, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Uh huh.
I wonder if it'd be possible to just make it, make it a fine and make it, make it, if that happens, you know, we've, all this stuff is designed to prevent these explosions. I mean, nobody wants those. But I wonder if it'd be possible just to change the ordinance so that if one occurred, the person that caused it has to pay a fine for it? I mean, I mean, we've got all these, you're supposed to drain the tanks, you're supposed to do all that stuff, and then, but it still keeps happening.
Pete, I'd like to take it a step further and provides a provision to where that business would be shut down, say for 30 days or some extended period of time. You know, that's what's going to truly impact that business and make them more careful, the ability to continue to operate the business.
I thought the problem was that we couldn't actually catch them. Like you have to, we actually have to have evidence that, that it happened at this time and they caused it. Is that right? You heard it, right?
I heard it, I smelt it, I felt it. I mean, the, there's, there's an aftertaste in your mouth, a metallic aftertaste. There has to be a serious amount of chemicals. I mean, just whatever happens to be under high pressure at the time that the explosion occurs, it's going to be released throughout the neighborhood. There's, then it went from a clear day to like you were in the middle of a fog. It's that much particulate debris being spread through the neighborhood, spread on the houses, the car, I mean, everything, the grass, everything. So after that happened, Kenny, we talked about, you were going to look at legal options for the city with that particular?
Yes, the fire marshal has been looking at that, and it was my understanding they were going to include something in the fire code amendments that would address that from the standpoint of equipment that would be installed or some process to address that. As far as just a fine, the problem is you have to prove where it came from. So you, in essence, would have to have someone posted to be able to testify that it actually came directly from that facility on that particular occasion. And so that's an issue with that. And as far as closing down a business, I'm not sure whether these businesses have to be licensed or not. If they have to be licensed by the city, we could revoke the license potentially for a violation.
I mean, John, I think, tried to have meetings with them, and nobody would call him back. We've had so many witnesses, so many evidence. I mean, this, these hydrocarbons being, that you know that's carcinogenic. Why would you allow carcinogenic materials to be spread through the fog through the neighborhood regardless, you wouldn't allow that even with a fine?
There, I don't know the complete history of this, but there have been a long series of meetings with the operators of these facilities going back more than a year, about a year and a half. So there, there have been efforts at the city level. If Rita Douglas-Tally was here, she could tell you the whole history of this because she was involved in a lot of these meetings, but there have been efforts and, and since this came up last time at the council, the fire code, working with Orville Jones of our office, had come up with a way to address this.
Why at a minimum would we allow them to just ignore John and not call them in here and try and have a meeting with the owners as a company?
Well, you can't actually make them call the councilmen. I mean.
I mean, all of us collectively.
They do have an attorney, and they've actually been meeting with city representatives for a year and a half.
Okay. What's the results of those meetings?
My understanding is that the, the numbers of those came down, that were reduced, but they were still occurring periodically.
What steps did they take to get a reduction in frequency?
They voluntarily reduced it. I don't know how. You want me to get somebody down here that was involved in all those meetings and he can get up to the podium and tell you? Hold on.
The public hearing set for February 11th.
You can go into all of that at the public hearing if you want.
Who should I talk to that was involved in this?
Orville Jones has been involved with the fire marshal's office in the last couple of months. Rita Douglas-Tally was involved in all the meetings that I believe go back to about the summer of 2012.
Councilman, if I might add something to address your specific concern, some of the requirements that are a condition of the permit address maintenance and ventilation of the machinery and use, which done correctly and in manufacturer specifications will address those problems. The other thing that I might add to that is if we could find and prove, as Mr. Jordan says, that they're not complying with the conditions of the permit, we could revoke the operational permit until they comply.
And this is really your best option because then you have the fire marshal actually enforcing some regulations. some regulations against the facility. That's why we, Orville and the fire marshal's office came up with this, and they were also working with Chief Berry on this.
A few days before I experienced that explosion, there was a fire, and fire was called out because there was a fire that was out of control at that facility?
I'm not familiar with the incident.
Okay, all right.
We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak that we haven't heard from yet. Ron Walters? Morning, Ron, we will need your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Ron Walters, 8501 South Walker. I'm actually not here today to gripe, I'm here to say thank you. Thank you very much for trying to take this action. This neighborhood and several others around there have been terrorized for years. These guys have successfully slipped through the cracks, through, we sat right in their conference room with all their fancy suit-and-tie boys and their lawyers, and they flew them in from out of town and all that, several of those companies down there, and sat there with the DQ, the code enforcement, everybody, and these guys have slipped through the cracks of everything. This at least is an action in the right direction to solve this thing. I agree with Mr. Greenwell and Mr. White, these guys don't understand anything but money. Until it becomes more expensive for them to fight the problem than to fix it, they're not going to fix it. It's just business for them, period. But it's not our business, it's our homes, it's our town, it's our city. So, thank you for addressing this, I hope this is a good step in the right direction.
All right, thanks for coming down, Ron. Daniella Davis?
Good morning. I am the, Daniella Davis, President of the JFK Neighborhood Association, and our neighborhood is located north of the recycling plant, one specifically that we have identified. This has been going on, these blasts, these booms have been going on in our neighborhood for years. We have about 400 homes, and many of our residents have experienced cracks in the walls and windows shattering and things like that. We've been tracking this for about three years. When the booms occur, what happens to your home, we have specific addresses where they have occurred, we also have photographs that we've taken of the smoke coming from specific direction. So we have been really involved in trying to address this problem. This is a serious problem. We have old and new homes in our neighborhood, and they're all being affected, and us, like Reverend Jackson said, it's an environmental issue as well. We don't know what long-term effects or impacts it might have on our health, and so we are very appreciative of you bringing this before the citizens so that they can, we can have a public hearing, but we urge your support for passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. All right, again, the item just being introduced today, and we'll be setting a public hearing if this resolution passes on February 11th, and it'll be up for final adoption on February 18th. John, you want to say something before we move it on?
Yes, I just want to take the time out to thank the John F. Kennedy Neighborhood Association for coming out and showing their support. The John F. Kennedy Neighborhood Association is one of the best neighborhood associations that we have in Ward 7, and also is one of the best neighborhood associations that we have in Oklahoma City. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for your leadership, and thank you also, I see, other officers and members of the association. Also, thank you, Coach Jackson, for your support in this endeavor. Thank you.
All right, John, you want to make the motion to receive this today?
I also move.
All right, we're voting on item 8E. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8F? All right, cast your votes. Item 8F passes unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8H is a resolution that reflects the city's continued involvement in securing the Women's College World Series for decades into the future. We've been working with the ASA and the NCAA, and this just kind of sets in motion our methods of financing the considerable construction we're going to be doing out there.
Our intent to go forward on this, as you recall, to get the commitment, which we've gotten now through 2035, required us to do some improvements out there, some is under construction right now as we speak, some will be continuing into next year. Their desire, as this event continues to grow, is to expand the seating capacity out there, because it's at capacity to bring in temporary facilities at this point in time. So the intent was that in 17 would generally be our next bond election, we would think at this point in time, there would be some additional sales in 18 and 19, but to have it, our next bond issues, to include a stadium expansion to the Hall of Fame, to get where they need. If we aren't able to do that, then we won't have the, we'll have a continued presence out there, but not through the 35 extension.
Comments or questions on this?
Mayor, I'd like to move the resolution. One of the, one of the kind of unsung heroes, I think, of Oklahoma City and has been for 30 years, has been the Oklahoma City All Sports Association. The things that, the events that Oklahoma City All Sports has brought to Oklahoma City, and the wide variety of events, I mean, all the way from rodeos to basketball tournaments to this, it just, they're probably unrivaled with regard to an entity in Oklahoma City that has really been a partner with the city and moved the city forward. You can trace almost all the major athletic events, and certainly the strong relationship Oklahoma City has with the Big 12 and with the NCAA, directly back to the All Sports Association. And while ASA is a great deal, and I mean, I don't want to say anything to diminish that, but for Oklahoma City All Sports, most of these events would not have a father, and Stanley Draper was that father for years and years and years, Stanley Draper Jr. And I see Mr. Brassfield here is kind of continuing that tradition, and they are just an asset to Oklahoma City that is unrivaled, I think.
I would second that, and certainly the integrity of the All Sports Association is without peer. They really have set themselves apart from other organizations. That's not to downplay the other organizations, they just do such a great job that it's a true asset of the city.
I agree, and it's an honor and privilege to have this facility, and guess what? Ward 7, thank you.
Mayor, I just want to point out that from my experiences, that they are one of the premier volunteer sports, amateur sports facilitators in the country. A lot of cities have organizing groups like that, but none with the volunteer effort that All Sports, it's very, very impressive they're able to accomplish.
We have a motion in a second. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you all for being here today. Item 8I, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Okay, cast your votes. Item struck. Item 8J, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8J? Second, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9, is claims recommended for approval? All right, comments or questions here on item 9, from anyone? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10, there's items from Council. James, you want to get us started today? Okay, Ed?
I just appreciated John and hundreds of others coming out through freezing cold to hear Dr. Sanders last Thursday. We had a really, really good discussion. About 250 people signed the petition that night, and thousands, and I think we're 13 days into the 90-day period, thousands have now signed the petition. I appreciated James and Pete and John making time to meet with Dr. Sanders the next day and having good discussions. He's available to talk to the Council at any time. He had food, hotel, and flight paid for. He's not compensated in any other way. He's talked to me at length for three years and spent 12 and 16-hour days on Thursday and Friday. He's not being compensated in any way, he just is helping to push, to provide questions that need to be answered. I understand the CBB had a focus group with all the general managers of the downtown hotels explaining the need for what would almost certainly be a publicly subsidized hotel, and so it does seem like the conversation's moving forward, and I appreciate everyone's involvement. Thanks.
Larry?
Just thank you, your honor. I'd like to thank Elaine Lyons for the work that she did in the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce and the event that was happening Thursday night. I'll keep my remarks in a different way, but David also talked, who was in attendance that night. The South Chamber is very, very active in developing the I-240 corridor from basically I-35 to the west to the airport, and as being the Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, we just approved a statement of work to continue the efforts to establish a BID, Business Improvement District, in that area, and also the economic development that is planned for the airport on the east side, the Lariat Landing also affects what goes on out there. So it was important for me to be there and for to hear what was going on, and it was a great meeting, and those folks are doing a great job. Thank you, your honor.
All right, Pete?
I don't have any comment other than to, I see Bob Kemper's here, and I'm sure he's here to talk about the resolution. We continued that resolution at the beginning to be reset once we have Tulsa Act and we have an opportunity to talk to some other people involved in the process.
David?
Thank you, your honor, and I would just like to, you know, continue Councilman McAtee's comments about the South Chamber. I think they've had a very successful past year with their efforts mainly along the I-240 Invision Project, but as well, they're very concerned with the development of the east side of the airport, as well as Crossroads Mall. I think we're going in the right direction to maybe recapture some of that lost revenue that the city has experienced from a retail sector. A couple of other items, though, I attended last week's meeting of Plan OKC, and I would encourage everybody who's a member of that committee to make those meetings, and then hopefully we will take that information out to the general public, because there's really some very innovative ideas that are being discussed at this time. One example is residential developments where you would have both large homes and small homes in the same neighborhood. They would look similar, but they would be of different size. One may be 3,000 square feet, and the other may be as small as 1,800 to 1,500 square foot in size. There's just a lot of interesting ideas being discussed, and I would encourage everybody who is a part of that committee to attend over the next several weeks as we kind of conclude with this process. Secondly, I've had the pleasure of attending two homeowners' meeting since last Tuesday, and both of those, the topic of, we are getting through a little bit early, about hens being allowed in residential areas with less than one-acre sized lots, and in the two homeowners' association meetings that I attended, the vast majority, in fact, maybe some people who were pro for it kept quiet just because so many people were against it. So I would encourage, as we go forward with this idea, to get out to the neighborhoods and have meetings to explain what these proposals are. Some of these individuals who are against it just may not be truly aware of all the provisions, and I know the Planning Commission is looking at that and creating ordinances or rules as we are at this point in time, but once they've accomplished that, if we are, I just think it's important to get that information out to the general public, because as it was a few weeks ago when we first addressed the issue in Ward 5, the vast majority of people are against it. Again, the first two homeowners' meetings that I've attended since last Tuesday when this was introduced, the vast majority of those two homeowners' associations are against it. So I'm just suggesting if people who are in favor of this, I think they really need to get out into the various neighborhoods to hold meetings to help explain the proposed rules. Thank you.
Meg?
Thank you, David. I was hoping we were going to get through that meeting, talking about chickens, actually. Just a very brief comment, I have had really positive feedback about the discussion about doing it via permit and allowing neighbors to...
I'll invite you to some of my neighborhood meetings in the future.
Maybe we can trade wards, it would work. Anyway, enough of that chickens, I just wanted to follow on with a couple of the actions that we took at the Economic Development Committee today. We also approved a planning study for Uptown 23rd Street. This district is moving so rapidly, and I think providing them a little outside guidance would be of great benefit. We also included a study of parking issues for the Plaza District and some sidewalk and accessibility concerns in the Paseo. So it was a very productive meeting and a couple of important things. Manager, thank you for helping us facilitate that.
John? Pat? All right, on the city manager reports.
This morning, we have Maureen Heffernan here. We did. I swore she was sitting right back there.
Yeah, she's gone.
To give us an update on the Mary Gardens.
Maureen, you're up. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, I'm really excited to be here to share what we've been doing at the garden for the last year, and I think in sharing this information with you, I hope it does a couple of things. One, I think it shows that we are making terrific progress with the private-public partnership vision that this arrangement is meant to bring to bear, and also just the range of activities, people coming to the park, using it, the range of things that we do, I think that maybe some of you know about some of them, but I bet all of you don't know about all of them. So I just want to go through that with you today and take any questions. On the right, that's not the right program. It should be 2014. These are the five things that every day when we go to work, my staff and I, we think of these five points, and we try to constantly keep these in mind as we're doing our work, as we're planning, and it's to keep the gardens green and beautiful, that's job number one. Keep it maintained and safe, keep it educational, active, build community, and make it better for everybody who visits it, and make it better for Oklahoma City. I'd like to start with some numbers, and this, I hope, will show you how we're making progress with funding all the things that we do. So I have our three years since the public-private partnership started in 2011, and that year you can see we still had just a couple of our nonprofit staff and primarily city staff. If you look at that staffing expense line, the combined number, you see how it went up in the second year, 2012-13, that's as we added more nonprofit staff, foundation staff, but you'll see in this current-year budget, it is down to 1.971 million. And I think the staffing budget is our best accomplishment in terms of efficiency and cost savings. Again, what a public-private partnership is supposed to deliver, significant cost savings. So we have been able to achieve over $300,000 in cost savings in transitioning from city foundation staff now to an all-private nonprofit staff. We've also had, it doesn't show on this slide, but we've had considerable savings on security costs, we've changed the way that was done, the way the city did it, we were able to find some ways to save well over $150,000 on that. So I just wanted to point that out as some significant savings that all of you are expecting from us, and we are delivering. The first year, our contribution to the combined budget of 3.7, we aimed to contribute 24% of the foundation through earned revenue, through fundraising. We did achieve that. That's a budgeted number, we actually did a little bit better than that. The second year, 2012-13, our contribution to the combined budget of 3.7, we aimed to The second year, 2012-13, our contribution, we grew that to 32%. We met that. We actually did a little better than the budgeted amount. This current fiscal year, we are aiming to provide 44% of the $3.6 million budget. And I am confident that we're going to meet that, and I hope we do a little better. So I think that is going very well. This shows you how we have been working very hard to raise, to grow our earned revenue growth. The highlighted sections are our biggest numbers that contribute to our operating budget. The Crystal Bridge admissions, 2011-12, there was $314,000. That was the year that it opened, the new design, and there was lots of marketing, lots of excitement. There was definitely a spike in attendance at the park and in the Crystal Bridge. Last year, the total number was 320,000. So it grew modestly, but in some ways, that's actually a really good thing, because often when something opens, there's a museum, there's a new attraction, you get this big spike, and then it goes down to normal. I'm pleased to see that, because we haven't made any significant changes at all in the Crystal Bridge, but yet the attendance actually grew modestly. So the fact that it didn't go down tells me that more and more people are going there on a more consistent basis. This year, the far-right column is the end of December. We get most of our money in through all of our various avenues in this second half of the budget year. So we're on track to meet that. That's why those numbers are lower in the right-hand column. You can see our rental and retail has grown tremendously. We have a full-time person who does nothing but rentals. Our festivals are growing. We're adding two. We hope to add another festival this year, perhaps a music festival. That's contributing a great deal. Our ice rink commission, we get about $90,000 to $100,000 a year on our ice rink commission. So we'll be getting the remainder of that in the next couple of months.
Maureen, how did the weather this year impact those?
The weather had a huge impact. We had four terrible weekends. That's the busiest time. The good thing is, though, with our ice numbers, at the end of December this year, we had about 18,250 people. The year before, at the end of December, we had 21,000. So there was really only about a 2,700-person decrease. And again, that's a good thing, too, because despite the four weekends, we had considerable drop. If we hadn't had those, it's growing. So had we had those good weekends, I know we would have been above year-to-date. So -- but you can't do anything about the weather. The revenue growth, this is where we put a lot of effort, because we can get the most return on our work through fundraising. And we are trying to cast a wide net, so we have a large group supporting it, supporting us, not just a couple of pots. So you can see our board dues. We have an extremely generous executive board, community board. Most of their revenue comes in the second half of this fiscal year. We have worked really hard to add some new events that bring in money, in particular our June Gala, which is just fantastic. That brought in a lot of new money this year. We'll keep that as an annual event, and that should grow, and we hope that is a cornerstone of some of our event income. Membership, we're really pleased with this, because this shows that a lot of people are joining as members to support us. So they may not have $1,000 to give, but they have $65. They like our programs. They want a return. So you can see that's really growing. Year-to-date, we have 52,000 in. Our goal is 70, so I think we'll surpass that. And that has a lot to do with the programs that we're offering. People are joining up to participate. They're renewing their memberships so they can continue. Grants, we had 196,000 last year. That jumped from 25 our first year. And this year, we have a small amount in the bank right now, 22, but we have 200,000 pending in grants that we have out in the world. So I'm confident we're going to exceed our grant budget total, which is 60,000 this year. So that just shows you how we're growing in our different earned revenue fundraising areas, so we can make our goal of delivering 2/3 of the annual budget that we earn, the city will contribute 1/3. Any questions on the financials?
Questions for Maureen?
Okay. I want to just give you very briefly. I have slides. Go quickly.
I'm sorry. Can I ask you one question on the financials? So the total budget is 3.6 million.
Mm-hmm.
What is the size of the Mary Gardens compared to the new -- is it a 70-acre park we're building, or 80?
We're 15 acres. So it's hard to compare apples to apples in terms of, you know, what that maintenance will be, depending what the factors are, the complexity, the staffing, the program ambitions, all of that. But for 15 acres, it's 3.6. Of that, utilities, we budget about $500,000. So if you deduct that, just round it to 3 million, that would be -- staffing is the big cost. Right now, we have -- there's about 26 full-time people. There is 12 to 15 seasonal part-time people.
I guess so I'm -- so that's 15 acres for 3.6 million, and we're building 70 acres. We were told by the consultants it would cost about 3 million.
In maintenance costs?
In total. Operations and maintenance costs.
You know, I don't know all the detail. I mean, I have gone to different meetings to see the park design, see the scope of it. 3 million sounds low to me, just comparing it to us, but it's, again, it's very difficult, because even though we're a smaller park, it may be more -- some of the more features are more complex to maintain. In the new park, I know they have wider grassy areas, so it doesn't add that much more to the maintenance in some ways. I don't know. A rule of thumb, you know, I've built some big projects in my career. I add 20% on to whatever consultant says. I also think with that, it's, you know, to think about the maintenance cost is one thing. It's really, what is the design? Is the design interesting enough? Is it compelling enough? Does it have some features that are really wonderful, that are going to attract people, that will make people support it? I think that's the core question. And then I think getting the right governance director in place at the onset who can start to really grapple with all those things, plan it, and really pinpoint, to the best they can, what it's going to cost to maintain and do, and that sort of thing.
Are there discussions or thoughts about how the two parks might capture operational efficiencies working together, or?
I haven't been involved in any of that. I don't know. I mean, I think we certainly -- I mean, they're completely complementary, I think. And to the extent we can coordinate on programming, so if we're doing something, it doesn't compete with what they're doing, or vice versa. I think, I'm sure, as things get closer to that point, we would be happy to coordinate and communicate, absolutely.
There have been meetings between my office and the mayor's office and members of Maureen's Board.
About those coordinating and capturing operational efficiencies?
Yes.
Okay.
We started the year, we had tornado relief at the gardens, which was terrific. We had lots of people come and support that, and it was great to have the gardens as a center of something creative and as effective as this kind of event was. We have lots of events going on in the garden. We have Egg Hunt. This is to say that this has been sponsored by Tinker Federal Credit Union, so to the extent we can, we try to bring in companies now to help sponsor our events, and that's a way we raise money and can put on these kinds of events. And it's been enormously popular. In fact, they're getting almost -- we have lots of people, and we almost need more space sometimes, because I think there's a real hunger for family events in the community. Playground is always popular. We have more folks coming and volunteering and helping us. This is Oklenoma, which was a really fun event. We brought in artists to create these things, and it's kind of a silly, fun thing, but I -- the reasoning behind it is you want to associate with children gardens equal enchantment, gardens equal magic, gardens equal fascination, and things like this help us do that. Very creative, lots of artists, and all ages seem to really enjoy these kinds of things we're doing. This is the new event. We did this year Splendor in the Gardens, and we had different ticket prices, so young professionals could attend, and this is something we'll do every year. We had children involved, leading us from the restaurant reception out to the Great Lawn, a beautiful June evening. And it was so exciting to see the Great Lawn. We had 350 people, chefs, we had tents. It was really quite the event. It had a wonderful feeling of community and support, and it was just a feeling of celebration that the park is really coming into its own. This is an evening shot. We'll be doing it this year, and we'd love for all of you to attend. Speaking of moons, we had -- we started the full-moon bike ride. We noticed that in the evening, when it's really hot in the summer, people want to do things, because it's too hot in the day, so we just had this idea to do a full moon. It's really grown in popularity. We've had about 250 people on our last bike ride. So we'll be doing that this year. Throughout the summer, we have lots of concerts. We've put on concerts. Our arts partners use our grounds for concerts. We raised money for tornado relief this year. The Allied Arts has their concert, Arts Council of Oklahoma City, Shakespeare in the Park. Our movie nights, these have become really popular. We have thousands of people on Wednesday nights who come down with their blanket and enjoy a movie. Yoga, we have more wellness programs. We're trying to do more fitness things. They have been growing in popularity. We're adding more art to the gardens. This is on the right. Prairie dog sculpture, which we'll be putting in the gardens in May. It's done by a top-top artist who does this kind of thing for children's gardens, and we're really excited. That will bring a sense of place, an icon, to the downtown. We're doing a lot of reading programs with children in the garden, indoors and out. We bring books to life through a grant from the Junior League. This is where the wild things are. We have book festivals we're starting. And because books and reading have become a signature thing that we'd like to develop, we had a local artist create a fanciful storyteller chair. So that's the before and after. And May came out to help us celebrate that day, test out the chair. There was a part of the garden that was underused, and we also have a need. A lot of people want to get married at the garden. They want to have proposal events at the garden. And so we decided, we hit this area, we thought this would be perfect for that. We were losing our restaurant space for rental income, although we are getting rental income from that, our commission income. So we decided to raise private dollars to build this beautiful new terrace. And thanks to the Herman and LaDonna Minders, this was done with private dollars, we built, I think, a beautiful new terrace area, which we can use for rentals, for income, but also programming. We can do small-scale events when the Great Lawn is too large, and I think it's a very beautiful contemplative space, too, for people to enjoy. It's not all gnomes and rainbows at the gardens. We have our problems. We have our issues, and I want to share some of those with you, but we are also addressing those. Last summer, I cringed, because our Minder's Garden did not look good. There's no doubt about it. To -- if you didn't know what was happening, you'd think we were neglecting it. We weren't. It's a timing issue. I don't want to plant in the summer when it's hot, and you're just throwing your money away, because it's just too stressful. So the garden, this part of the garden, was not as it should last year. But when the weather cooled, we had all of our irrigation problems fixed. We planted it, and now it's absolutely beautiful. So I want to send the message out that there may be some areas of the garden you see that have some issues, but know that we're aware of it. I'm aware of it, and we have plans to go down our list and repair and fix them. But now this area where some plants had died out or were never planted, they are all filled in, in the Minder's Garden, and I think it's going to be just beautiful this year. There's some befores and afters. We've added plant labels, so people can learn what grows well. This is an area of the Minder's Garden before. Here's an aftershot. Our lawns in our children's garden was not holding up well. We resotted it, and now it's a nice lush lawn. We have some issues with pavers we have to address and fix. We have more areas that have not been planted yet. We have some areas that are planted, but I think we can do much better as a botanical garden. We can add more diversity and beauty and interest to it. So we'll be working on that. So I just wanted to share some issues like that. There's a list of some repairs. Some are cosmetics. Some are a little more involved, but we are working on those. The storm, we had considerable damage in the storm. On the left side, that is the water stage underwater. On the right is our thunder fountain. Had a terrible flood, and all the mechanics kind of fried. So the kids had to make do with our Plaza Fountain last summer for most of it, which they enjoy. We did get our thunder fountain working. We've added in features that it will not flood again. That kind of catastrophic problem will not occur. And kids love the thunder fountain. It's a great place to be. We opened Nyx Burgers last fall, which was very popular. That will open again in March through October. Pumpkinville has -- it's our second year. It's just become extremely popular, very positive comments on it, thousands of people. We have local artists come in and make things, and we want to do that going forward on an even larger scale. The ice rink opened. I told you about those numbers. The Ice Cube sells food. We bought that for concession. It's the garden in winter. We tried to enhance what we did this year for holiday decorations, inside and out. OG&E helped us create some of these custom lighting features, and every year, we'll be adding some to it. This was the bridge, which I thought was really beautiful this year. We have volunteers help us on a lot of things, and the Stars and the Conservatory were really beautiful this year. We had winter shops. Again, there was a little too much winter in winter shops, and we want to grow that to be even livelier next year. They're all locally-owned shops that were participating. The restaurant opened. That's doing very well. We've started the year off with volunteers, MLK Day. We are having an orchid show that's new this year to drive some more folks to enjoy the Crystal Bridge. Gardening school, this is really, we planned this, and we had no idea there was such an urban agriculture chicken issues brewing, so I have to bring up chickens again, Meg. I guess we were pretty prescient. We didn't realize it. But this is charred to chickens, and we're bringing in a national expert. I'd encourage you to go. She's a real pioneer. Her name is Rosalyn Creasy, and she is known, this was 30 years ago, she was tearing up her front yard for vegetable gardens and chicken coops in a very ornamental way. So she's our keynote speaker. She's from California, and she's terrific. And we're also having chicken school. So this is March 14. Rosalyn is leading that, so I will give all of you tickets. You can hand out -- Ward 5, maybe, David, you can give you the most. But chicken school, we are going to educate people how to keep chickens. We're going to tell them whatever the latest city policies are. We will make sure we communicate that. And so we would be happy to offer chicken school to Oklahoma City, if you need us to do that. But this should be a lot of fun and interesting. Secret Garden, another family festival, bringing books to life in May. And I'll end with, I went to the program, I think it was last week, they announced the results of the Oklahoma City Park Master Plan for the parks, which I thought was really good. And this, I just highlighted this, because this, based on a survey, these were the needs that are not being met or need to be met more in the city at parks. So I hope you've seen that we are doing a number of these things. I think we can, we want to do something more for seniors. I think that's an area we could grow. But we're going to be thinking about this, too. Wellness, special events, festivals, seniors, biking, family programs, so we can contribute more to that unmet need in the city. So thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Maureen. Any questions for us? Thank you. Jim? Any other city manager reports?
No, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the other two.
All right. No one has signed up for Citizens to Be Heard. Okay. Where's your? Thanks, everybody.